I would now call it August 19th, 2013, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under and out, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those in the audience, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's City Council meeting. On the consent agenda, I am pulling Item E. Are there other items that need to be pulled? If not, I would accept a motion to approve. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
You received an email from Mr. Johnson, and before you, you have an amendment to Item E that needs to be offered to correct some language. So, Mr. Johnson, would you like to explain it to them?
Yes, Your Honor. Conversation this morning with Councilman Fowler just identified some areas in this resolution where we could tighten up the language a little bit to further clarify exactly what's happening with this particular Brookbridge account. So, staff is pleased with the proposed amendments and don't have any further comments or questions.
Any questions? If not, accept a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, y'all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation on Central Jackson County Emergency Management Agency Report. Mr. Sandy. And Deputy Chief Farley, I'm sure is going to follow, and between the two of you, good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Very pleased to be here this evening, not only as your Public Works Director, but also as the Coordinator for Blue Springs within the CJCEMA. As you probably know, the EMA not only covers the 53,000 people in Blue Springs, but also the adjacent communities like Tapawingo and Green Valley and unincorporated Jackson County. The mission of the Central Jackson County Emergency Management Agency is to support and coordinate the emergency management efforts, ensuring that the Central Jackson County is prepared to protect against, plan for, respond to, and recover from natural and man-made The four areas that we really look at, definitely prevention where we can for flooding, ice storms, be prepared for those, but basically, it's more to be ready to react if something occurs. Make sure the plans are in place. And that also falls into the preparedness, where we make sure that we're trained. As all of you on the council have done, we've done the NIMs training so that you're familiar with the National Management System. Response, so that we have an adequate response for the citizens within our district. And then recovery, which is usually the long-term follow-up to any disaster. I mean, when you look at Katrina, the Joplin tornado, even the ice storm we had in 2002, it took us 93 days to recover from that. And so, we have the steps in place to make sure that not only we can do that effectively and efficiently, but also so that all the paperwork is done properly, so that if there is a disaster declared, that we can get the reimbursed funding from federal and state officials. With that, I'd like to introduce, if you don't know, Mr. Farley, Deputy Chief Farley, who is our Emergency Management Director for CJCEMA.
Thanks, Chris. Just to remind you how our CJCEMA works, it is a partnership between the Fire District, the City of Blue Springs, City of Green Valley, and then Lake Tapawingo. And so, that's the jurisdiction. I serve as the Director of Emergency Management, and then each of the cities have a Coordinator. In Blue Springs, it's Chris Sandy. In Green Valley, it's Aaron Ambrose, and then Jim Ross in Lake Tapawingo. So, Chris talked a little bit about what we are and what we do. A little bit of a history, in 1982, CJCEMA was formed. Looking back at some of the history and the documents that we have, it was just, it was a means to bring these communities together and have a planning effort for emergency management. From that agreement was the first Emergency Operations Plan, which, over time, grew into different plans and grew into the document that we're currently working under, which was promulgated, I want to say, in 2007. What we recognized in 2007, 2008, was that we still, even though the EMA was there, we had a weakness. And the weakness really was that the partnership wasn't there between the Fire District, the cities, and those that make up the Emergency Management Agency. So, with discussion between the city administrators at that time, it was, it was kind of thought that we needed to kind of hit the redo button with emergency management. And the city administrators agreed to this. And that's when we came up with the establishment of the coordinators, representing each of the cities. And so, you get a lot more, we have a lot more of the partnership between the organizations. And it also established the Director and the Coordinator for each of the cities. So, operating off of a budget, and then that's part of the partnership, is sharing in the expenses of the Emergency Management Agency. And you'll see on the slide, some of the first three are really, or four, actually, are hard funds. These are dollars that each of the political entities put forward to fund the agency. My salary is not in there, but what you'll see is portions of our Emergency Management Planner. Part of that, those funds from each of the cities and the Fire District goes to pay for that planner. It also covers expenses like the maintenance on the tornado sirens. It helps fund our CERT team and some of the preparedness efforts that we go through, and I'll explain the CERT team here in a little bit. These other items, the UASI Urban Area Security Initiative, we've received funding for the CERT team, the trailer, you've seen the trailer, the CERT team has, that was a donation, or I'm sorry, it was part of the grant that came from the Mid-America Regional Council through their stream of funding for UASI. And then, we are an EMPG Grant, Emergency Management Performance Grant, that is a FEMA program that's administered by the State of Missouri, and it's based on performance. You have to perform. When we applied for it, we had to show our strengths and our weaknesses, and then what FEMA expects is that the money that we receive for that EMPG is that we have to show performance. We have to show it quarterly, and then we have to show it annually as well. And so, there's an application process that we have to go through every year. We're about to attend the grant guidance meetings here in just a little bit in Jeff City, and we're up for another to continue that grant. This year with the grant, we also included a lot of our tornado siren maintenance. There's been a lot of maintenance that's gone on with the sirens, upgrading of the radio system for those sirens, and a lot of other hard material that the EMA has put forward. So, that $45,000 should go up quite a bit if we are awarded the full grant. Preparedness. Preparedness really is one of the main functions of an Emergency Management Agency. In the slide, you see two of our CERT team members at a, an exercise, a training exercise that we went through. In the room here today, we have several of our CERT team members, and then, of course, Councilman Edmondson is one of our CERT team members, an active CERT team member. But these folks have all gone through a 22-hour program that's put out through FEMA. The program started with Blue Springs Police Department having the forethought to say, what, how else can we involve our citizens in this community? Captain Morton and Sergeant Kids were really kind of the brainstorming element of our CERT team, and they brought it forward. And it's blossomed from the first class of, I want to say, 20, 20-some-odd students to now, we've trained 86 of our citizens on how to be prepared. Not only for themselves, but for their neighbors. And then, a large part of these citizens have remained as volunteers with the CERT team to make up the team component, and they make up a deployable asset, not only in our own community, but surrounding communities and regionally. So, it's just a really beneficial program where we involve the citizens of these communities to be a part of the emergency management and the preparedness efforts in this community. I can talk more about them. I like bragging about them. They put a lot of time and effort on a voluntary basis, but I'll stop there. You can ask any of us questions about our CERT team whenever you'd like. And if you'd like to attend a class, we have one starting in the fall. Preparedness also means warning the public. Warning the public when there's a disaster that's coming up. The Project Community Alert is something that we, we work with the Mid-America Regional Council on, where people can, can go to your neighborhood, Price Shopper, both of ours are participants in this, and they can buy a weather radio to really reduce costs. And that's really been the main message to people, and don't, don't rely on tornado sirens as your only warning to storms or significant events. That's what those weather radios are for. And then, just the simple message of, it is really your responsibility to be prepared for a disaster. Government can only do so much. And so, the more you're prepared to deal with that disaster, the better it is for your own outcome. Preparedness is also with the tornado sirens, and we have several throughout the jurisdiction. A function of the Emergency Management Agency is to make sure that those sirens are working. And so, we take it upon ourselves to make sure that all of them throughout the jurisdiction, not just Blue Springs, but the ones that the Fire District owns, the ones that Green Valley owns, and make sure that all of those sirens are working when they're supposed to and that they're maintained. Planning, huge effort with Emergency Management. And over the last little over a year and a half, this EMA has been working very hard to make sure that our planning efforts are solid in this community. It was about 18 months ago that we started to do a total rewrite of our Emergency Operations Plan, which is fundamental for any community, to have a plan that works. And the plan that we had, it did work, but it wasn't really where we needed it. It was put together, and it was promulgated, and was put out there, but it just kind of missed the, the local, what really, what we need to have in Blue Springs and Green Valley and Lake Tapawingo, to make sure that we have a plan in place that works. And so, we have rewritten this document to meet the emergency support function that FEMA went to several years ago. The State of Missouri has not made the move and the transition just yet to the ESF format. We did, and we're about to be completed with this program, and you will have that pretty soon in front of you to be promulgated at each, at Blue Springs and Green Valley and Lake Tapawingo. The people that wrote this are people that work here. They work, or they are volunteers in this community. So, when it came to the ESF for law enforcement, it wasn't the emergency manager that wrote that. It was a group of law enforcement officers from Blue Springs, Green Valley, Lake Tapawingo, the sheriff, the school district, that all got together and said, what makes a local Emergency Operations Plan for us in this community? And it was those, it was those professionals that wrote that emergency support function for law enforcement. Likewise, with Public Works, with Fire, with Hazmat, with each one of those ESSs. It was a partnership with the county, it was a partnership with some of the federal organizations out there. I saw Carol Baker in the crowd. It was a partnership with KCPNL because energy is ESF 12, right? And so, KCPNL was a part of writing that specific ESF. And so, this is almost done, and you will have it very soon in front of you. It involves active participation in state and regional planning efforts. We're not in a vacuum. You have to work regionally. You have to work with your neighbors. You have to work with your neighbors on the Kansas side. You have to work with FEMA. You have to work with the State Emergency Management Agency. And so, we are very involved with Mid-America, with the Local Emergency Management Planning Committee, the Emergency Managers, the Public Information Officers Group, and the Kansas City Urban Area Security Initiative, along with numerous other meetings and groups that are out there, that really, they are the planning part and the training and the exercise for the region. And so, we're very active with MARK. The Emergency Management Structure works, it follows the state legislature when it comes to the Missouri statutes, when it comes to emergency management. We are the CJCEMA. It has the four organizations that are a part of it. We have some reporting requirements to DHS and Homeland Security, but mainly, we report to CIMA. We work with the region, the CIMA Region A Area Coordinator, Maureen Burke. She's Office Stat Lee Summit. We work with her very closely. And then, further reporting requirements to FEMA. That's the structure and how it works. Our operations then, EOC, Operational Readiness and Activation. The EOC is at our Fire Training Center on 40 Highway. That building was designed not only as a classroom format, I'm sure all of you have been there, but it's also set up as an EOC format, so that we can, we can put it into, into use and activation when there's a need for it, when we need to. In 2012, we had two, we had two limited activations, mainly, it was the winter storms that we dealt with in, in February. Limited in the fact that it was only an awareness. If you saw any of the reports that we generated, we worked off of 12-hour operational periods, and it's really just, let's keep a really close eye on what's going on and what's needed. Thankfully, our partners were out there working with us, like KCPNL, like all of our Public Works Departments, including the county, to make sure that, that we were safe in what we were doing. Training and exercise is another fundamental part of the Emergency Management Agency. We have not done as many exercises as we have in the past, only because over the last 18 months, the EMA has been rewriting the plan. When you exercise, you exercise components of the plan. And so, we really didn't want to do any exercises when we have a plan that's what we're trying to put together, okay? And so, once it's promulgated, we'll have a training program where all those that need to be trained in this will be invited to attend. Of course, any of you are welcome to attend any or all of those training sessions if you'd like. And then, we will exercise and start a regular cycle of exercises. The goals, just to summarize this, the goals, completion of the new Local Emergency Operations Plan. We're going to continue to meet those EMPG requirements. That is a funding stream that is incredibly valuable to this community. And so, we're going to continue and explore more options with that EMPG. Minimum of one exercise locally, all right, that we will all be a part of. Continue to evaluate the needs of the outdoor warning siren. New technology may help us out in the future with some of the things that we can do. Continue to support the CERT team. Again, I can't brag about them enough. They do a lot, just the hours that they put in volunteering to be prepared. I have a lot of confidence in that group, and like I said, I can talk about them all night. Continue to participate in local, regional, state, and federal initiatives. That's just part of that, that planning effort, that you have to be active and you have to be involved. Enhance citizen preparedness. Continue to do those talks that we've, we started to do last year. We did three or four of them in the community. And just do more of that. The KC Team Responder ID Badges, that's a project that's coming out of the, out of MARK, and that is one of those, it's an accountability system as well as a credentialing system. We'll get that in play here fairly soon. And then, continue to develop the EOC capabilities. What else do we need to do to ensure that we have an effective EOC? And then, assist with the development of the Region A and H, Region, we're in Region A, Agent A. Region H is the St. Joe area. We've partnered up with them to create an incident support team, all right, to be able to help each other out during a large disaster. And that's, you know, a fairly large geographical area. So, that is our annual report on the CJCEMA. If y'all have any questions, I know Chris will answer, Chris or I will be happy to answer any of those.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing that, I want to thank you for making the presentation tonight, and I also want to thank the people in the audience, as well as those that didn't, were not able to come tonight, because it's good to know that in times of crisis, that we have our neighbors looking out for ourselves, looking out for each other. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Sandy, as well as you Deputy Chief, for coming, making that presentation.
You're welcome.
What are your Marano? Take the Marano, Paul. Next, we have a presentation by Councilman Jeff Quabell, who I believe is Chair or Vice-Chair of the Information Technology and Communication Policy Committee at the National League of Cities. I know you have one of those titles. Is it Chair or Vice-Chair?
Vice-Chair, Your Honor.
Vice-Chair on your way to Chair.
Theoretically, yes. Got to get re-elected in order to make it there. We'll see how that goes. What I, I asked to have this presentation so that you all could hear a little bit about what I'm doing in my service as Vice-Chair of the ITC Committee for National League of Cities. What I've given you this evening, first of all, is a packet that contains all of the policy statements and resolutions that my committee is responsible for as of the last meeting in November last year. And then, the second sheet is a summary of some of the discussions that we had this summer in our summer policy session. And I just thought I'd run through those points briefly for you, and then we can get on with the rest of the meeting. Some of you may be familiar with the Marketplace Fairness Act. This is, this is a series of legislation coming out of the Senate and currently being considered in the House of Representatives, has to do with collecting taxes that are due for sales on the Internet. And the NLC is asking us, as local officials, to be supportive of this legislation and to encourage our, encourage our federal elected officials to support it. What I've provided you here is a press release that kind of describes what that's all about, and I'll let you read that for yourselves. We also have been talking about, there's an effort underway at the federal level to eliminate the tax exemption on municipal bonds. And of course, that can have a huge impact on us and also on our citizens. The people who go out and buy those bonds expect to be able to have those bonds, the income from those bonds be exempt from taxes. So, I don't have a lot of detail for you on that one, but they've asked us also to be communicative with our federal officials and let them know that we want to maintain those longstanding tax exemptions for interest on bonds. Also, there's, they're looking at how CDBG is going to be refunded again, Community Development Block Grants, and they're, in the Senate, they're looking at maintaining CDBG funding for the next year, pretty much where it is, and in the House, they're looking at cutting it by about 50 percent. The NLC's position on that is, we want to maintain the funding. And that, of course, would affect, you know, Ron, in our meetings on CDBG, you talked about funding for low-income families in our city. This would directly impact them if it were to be reduced. There is a program called FirstNet. It's a nationwide broadband network that involves public safety. I'm in the process of learning about this. I first learned, first learned about it at the summer meeting, and so, I'm going to be doing some research. But it's important that we connect, there's a state-level organization here, if our staff is not already connected with the effort of FirstNet, it's something that we, as a community, need to be thinking about and planning for. I saw this as an opportunity to come back and, and make us aware of that, of that program. And again, it has to do with basically nationwide communications between our public safety We also had discussions on legislation regarding digital goods. And this is early discussions for our committee, and it's different than the Marketplace Fairness Act. It also has to do with Internet purchases, but it is more oriented towards developing new revenue sources for state and local government. In particular, we spent a lot of time listening to pros and cons of what actually is a digital good. A simple example would be an app that you download on an iPhone or on a smartphone. And so, the committee is looking at policies to recommend for the national level as to how those items might be taxed, how to present a level playing field between local merchants and Internet merchants, and make sure that everybody is playing on a level playing field. One of the more interesting discussions that, from my perspective, that we participated in was a discussion of broadband nationwide, particularly in the area, in the suburban areas in low-income neighborhoods, and also rural areas. There's an effort underway right now to make sure that every household in our nation has access to broadband. And it very much, it's very much like what happened in the 30s, 1930s, that area, when we began the process of rural electrification here in the United States, and when a minimum standard of communication was defined for our households in the form of what they called plain old telephone service. For a long time, that's been the standard as to how we tie our households as a minimum to, to each other. Right now, what we're considering is policies that will raise that standard beyond plain old telephone service to include broadband access. And so, that's kind of an interesting discussion, because most of us who carry smartphones, we're very well-connected, but we don't realize there's a lot of people in our nation that have no way to connect to the Internet at all. And so much of our commerce is occurring over the Internet today. It's important to give everybody the opportunity to participate in that. That's kind of a summary of what we've been talking about. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has, if I can.
Are there any questions, or Councilman Quabell? All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you updating us on some of that. Do you know, in the Senate, that our state US Senators, what their position was on this Marketplace Fairness Act?
I do not know that off the top of my head, Mayor, but I will find the answer for you.
Just curious. Okay, well, thank you again for making that presentation, and thank you for service on the National League of Cities. Again, it gives our city representation and presence at the national level, so we appreciate that. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4267.
All right, introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4267, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Retainer Agreement for Legal Services in Connection with the Collection of Municipal Taxes and/or Fees, KCPNL Entities.
Motion?
Move.
Will be approved on first reading, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4267, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Retainer Agreement for Legal Services in Connection with the Collection of Municipal Taxes and/or Fees, KCPNL Entities.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given Ordinance 4446.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4268.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4268, An Ordinance of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to Establish and Continue the Procedure to Disclose Potential Conflicts of Interest and Substantial Interest for Certain Municipal Officials, First Established by Ordinance Number 2101 Pursuant to Section 10548311.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4268, An Ordinance of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to Establish and Continue the Procedure to Disclose Potential Conflicts of Interest and Substantial Interest for Certain Municipal Officials, First Established by Ordinance Number 2101 Pursuant to Section 10548311.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given Ordinance Number 4447.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4269.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4269, An Ordinance Amending the 2012-13 Annual Budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4269, An Ordinance Amending the 2012-13 Annual Budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given Ordinance Number 4448.
Brings some Merrill announcements. Before this body meets again, there's a holiday called Labor Day, which will be on Monday, September 2nd, which means our next council meeting will be Wednesday, September 4th, at 6:30 here in this building. Those are the only Merrill announcements I have, which brings us to Thutz de Panda. Tonight, I don't have an Arthur, but it says, "Don't learn the tricks of the trade, learn the trade." the trade." Next is adjournment.
Move we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. We adjourn.[1794.66]